Let's call this meeting to order. Apologize for starting late. Let's, we can all rise. Let's remind us of the names. Like the agents.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation
Under God.
Indivisible with liberty and justice in the heart.
All right. Just a couple of things before we begin the meeting. It was reminded to me again, so I'll remind it to the board again. When you speak, please speak into the microphone. If you speak softly, pull the microphone towards you. It helps with transcripting the minutes and also for folks who are watching on TV. It helps for them to hear what we're saying. I'd also just like to thank the administration for participating in our second annual board retreat, which conveniently was held at this very place. So we didn't have to travel too far for the board meeting. As usual, blown away by the commitment of our administrators and blown away by some of the information that comes across to us through that meeting. You think you've heard it all and it's just really surprising about either where there are needs in the district or things that we're doing well or where we can improve. And I just want to make sure that we as a board follow up on that and build on that discussion. As I said in the meeting, those conversations are rattling around in my head and ideally would like to talk about it. But I guess now's not the time. So we move on to item 4.0 to approve amendment minutes of November 25. Is there a motion? Motion to approve by Steve, seconded by Dave. Take a moment to look them over. Do you want to have any changes? Okay, I had a couple of changes. On page four, under adopt 2013-2014 board goals, in the second sentence, and this was one for a few, should be all a few. That was eliminated, just a spelling mistake there. The other items that I would like to take a look at, just to make sure. Bill, when you were talking about facilities, it says here, the facilities committee needs to look at developing subcommittees to start taking a long and serious look at elementary education in RSH1, and Morse renovation, and relocation. I don't think you had said relocation. Maybe something about Morse renovation and the future of Morse High School. We didn't talk specifically about relocating Morse High School. What is that, amend that?
The future of Morse High School. Answer both questions.
Okay. Make that change. And then Steve, I wanted to ask you, were you satisfied with that paragraph also under facilities where it says vice chairperson August expressed his concern that by having some of the smaller projects done at House, it may be drawing on our maintenance staff and still need to maintain our facilities and campus?
I have a rest of concern.
Yeah.
Actually, back to editorialize. I think her move over there tonight from the day of the presentation, talking about the summer, the summer work and how Long's sort of opinion on everything's bad. Is there an example of concern?
So do you mind if we amend that motion to approve those two changes?
I would amend, no. If amended, I would recommend approval as asked.
Any other changes from the board? Right, there's a motion on the floor to approve the minutes with two changes. All those in favor, raise your hand. None opposed? Passes. Okay, item 5.0, adjustments to the agenda. Were there any adjustments? No adjustments for this evening. Okay, public comment? I guess there will be no public comment this evening, at least for the first public comment section. We'll move on to committee reports. Begin, item 7.1, finance committee report. Steve?
Yep, we met December 5 and essentially reviewed, started the process of reviewing some of the budget to the background information regarding the budget. A lot of focus back of our meeting was on labor salary injections, which the debt provided us. We also talked through the annual, Patrick had me, took the opportunity to just update the thing and really still help with the application. Add it, and add it with the needs going forward and focus on elements of the budget to try to prepare us analyzing the current conditions that Patrick covered us asked for some information on historical spending which both of the focus of our agenda.
Any questions for Steve? What happened with the last audience committee meeting? Okay. Turn it over to Bill for facilities committee report.
Well, since the facilities committee meeting was canceled this past month, I have little or nothing to add to what we said last month. We'll be reconvening in January and moving forward establishing some goals for the committee.
Any questions for Bill? I know you had mentioned the last meeting about forming those subcommittees. I'm assuming that probably be a priority starting the first of the year once we get through the holidays.
It'll be one of the priorities that we'll have for sure. And I want to meet with the superintendent and discuss a methodology moving forward to.
I think we have around 20 deans that have been suggested to us by community members or principals, but that's what we need to talk about. Just like we do with community numbers on our other committees that we have. Should we have some type of application process or how to get these people involved and their backgrounds? Who would be on the elementary committee and who would be on the course?
The Morse committee, right.
That's great, we've got all these measures. We're moving.
And just to get back to finance committee. When is the next finance meeting, do you know?
Well, I mean, it's the second, this day of school session.
Okay, your second. And Bill, next facilities, do you know? Okay.
It says the 14th year in our prepared schedule.
Thank you.
So probably we'll get to 14 from us.
Okay, item 8.0, superintendent's report.
I'll be brief, just we've had a lot of concerts at all of our schools, very well done, from elementary up to the high school. A lot of work on community service by our students and staff as well as just giving back to families and the community this holiday season when some people desperately need it. Maria Morris, who's our jobs and mates graduates teacher, is, she's got to be, might be the best one in the state. Very fortunate to have her. And she had the induction ceremony, it was a week and a half ago, and there was 57 students that were involved in the JMG program at Sutton Manor. And it's just a, she always does things first class in the ceremony that she had that evening. Just a wide variety of people. The students took it very seriously. But you had community leaders, business leaders, law enforcement, just all kinds of adult mentors for these students that were the audience. And just a very well done production, I heard. And this last, BMS sixth graders went to a sudden made math meet, which is always very competitive. And they came in seventh place out of 26 teams, which is really good. And we had one, we had two students tied for third individually out of like 150 students. And one student came in fifth place. So it was really very exciting for them. I'm looking forward to the next math meet.
Okay. I have one question for you. Again, since it's not really a topic either, this would be the chance to ask it. Do we have, what kind of progress are we making on finding an engineer or project supervisor?
Yeah, I mean, we've been in touch with bond council. Well, firstly, Dick Renegy came up, our financial advisor since he came up and met with Ruthie. And we know what kind of data he needs, financial data, as well as a facilities report, a long range facilities planning report. It's one of the data. So we're in the process of working on that part. The more frustrating part is for me is the facilities part of going out to bid. And I've been in touch with BGS, Bureau of General Services Augusta. They've been slow getting back to me, but I filled out the necessary paperwork to start the process. But they keep asking the question, do they give us the green light to put an ad in the paper and also in the Augusta paper to go out and bid for an architectural engineer? And I haven't quite got the answer to that yet. I wanted to have it done, you know, before the holiday break so that when we came back, we'd have envelopes coming in, bids coming in. But there's been a little bit of delay with that. But I hope to be able to get in touch with them again tomorrow and expedite this process.
Okay, thank you. All right, on to 8.2, financial report. Ruth? Do you want to maybe spin that mic over in her direction? I want to just set it down. Great, thank you.
This month is the November report and I've gone through it this time with a little bit heavier hand than I had last month. We have started purchasing fuel a little bit sooner in bigger bulk than we did last year. I think it maybe is getting colder quicker and so I've tried to reflect that just in looking at some of the purchase services with the assumption that we will spend those things. And so I brought it down to, right now it shows the $410,000 left there and pretty flat on the revenue side right now. I don't see that we would be gaining much of revenues. And then this month, I proposed this to the finance committee. The second page is just looking at the budget. Instead of a cost center format, it's looking at account type. So looking at salaries, benefits, the purchase services, supplies and equipment, debt service, and other expenses. And just to give you a different perspective, we thought that we would try this for a couple, three months to see if it makes a difference to you. If not, then I don't have to do it either. So just a different way of looking at the budget. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ruth? You're off the hook.
Great, thank you.
I think one thing I'll point out, and again, since Ruth took the time to do this second sheet, it would be worth taking a look at is if you look at how our budget is broken up into basically, in this format, salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies and equipment, debt service, other expenses. There are two things that really should stand out. One is that, again, the majority of our budget goes towards people, the people who have direct contact with the students. And that's a fixed item of a $14 million item. Really, all of that has either been spent year to date or is encumbered. That, all of that money is committed. The only variance we have in there is about $58,000. If you add up all of those amounts remaining, and those amounts remaining are really the items where there's either a little bit of flexibility in that budget item or some additional. On an almost $28 million budget, you can see we'll be fortunate at the end of the year if there's $410,000 left. Of the $27 million budget, we've already spent eight and a half million. There's 18.6 million that's encumbered, that's already committed. So that's a done deal. So again, really, the only wiggle rung we have between now and the end of the year is that $410,000. So again, just another way to look at those numbers based on, you know, formulating it under different category headings. Okay, on to old business. Item 9.1, review of 2013-2014 board goals. Any comments on the board goals? Where we stand right now? Patrick, you had mentioned that now that we've approved these, we've got a schedule formulated?
Yeah, probably by the end of this week I'll send you a draft schedule and ask for feedback on it.
Just for the folks who would be watching this, do you know tentatively what you have scheduled for presentation for the January meeting?
For January, it was going to be, I hope it can work, but Sharon Brad is searching for an outside person, you know, to come in as well. But it would be that focus on special education, trying to develop a better understanding of overall how the process works, what's mandated, the costs that are associated with it.
All right. If there's no comments on the goals, we'll move on to item 9.2. Second reading of policy AC, nondiscrimination slash equal opportunity in affirmative action. This is an action item. Is there a motion? Bill moves to approve, Dave seconds. Any questions? Comments on this policy? I just have one question. Just, who's currently on affirmative action designated?
Karen Curly, social director, BMS.
Any other discussion, questions? Okay, there's a motion to approve this policy as written. All those in favor, raise your hand. None opposed? Passes. Okay, on to item 9.3, second reading of policy ACAa, harassment and sexual harassment of students. Is there a motion on this? Motion to approve? Seconded by Robin. Any questions, comments on this? Right, all those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. None opposed? Passes. Okay, we'll move on to item 9.4, second reading of policy ACAa-R, harassment and sexual harassment complaint procedure. Is there a motion? Motion to approve? Seconded by Alan. Any comments, questions, changes? I hear none. All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. Okay, passes. All right, item 9.5, second reading of policy ACAb-R, employee discrimination and harassment complaint procedure. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Steve to approve, or seconded by Robin. Any further discussion on this policy? All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. None opposed? Passes. Okay, we will move on to new business. And item 10.1, we have a number of retirements. So I'll turn this over to Patrick.
Now, just, I'll go down for them individually because it's an informational item. But there's six people listed here, which equals 158 total years of service to RSH1. So first one is Betsy Card, elementary teacher at Pittsburgh, who has 21 years of service in the system. Deb Kennedy, elementary teacher at Dyke School, 36 years. Sharon Laurel, school nurse at Morse, 12 years of service. Rick Joyce, social studies teacher at Morse, 31 years of service. Laura Joyce, teacher at Morse, 30 years. And Ruth Moore, our business manager, 28 years in the system. So I'd like to thank all these people for what they've done for either Squeal or 47, Bass, RSH, and general, and they all showed their best.
Okay, and Ruth has left, you know, all these folks, again, great contribution to the district. I've had direct working relationship with some of these more than others, but none more than Ruth. Sorry she isn't here, but again, just want to thank her for her integrity and the great support that she's been to this board. We'll continue to appreciate that support as we get close to the end of the year. Good luck to you after that, Patrick. Okay, we'll move on to item 10.2, sabbatical leave request. This is an action item.
I would move approval of the two requests, supposing that with the stipulation that we have satisfactory substitutes for them.
Okay. So motion, second. Approve. In the condition of satisfactory subs. And that's a motion by Alan, seconded by Steve. Any further discussion on this?
I have a question. How far advanced to, these folks even they plan as go to Costa Rica and to China, how far advanced will we be able to feel that we have the luxury of subs in place?
I mean, I get what Alan is saying. I think it makes sense at the same time. You know, we probably would not look for subs. I mean, maybe in the summertime or the first of the fall. You know, that's, I mean, there's, I say in the back, there's a lot of benefit, don't get me wrong, to both teachers that have given a lot of years of service and have a great job for us. You can see in the contract, the limit is two a year. It is both happen to be in the spring semester and they both happen to be at Morse High School. Which, you know, from a pragmatic standpoint is, you know, one's a foreign language and one's a social studies history is, you know, what is out there defines for students a quality teacher, you know, starting in January of the 14, 15 school year. So that's, you know, that's, I guess, the downside. I mean, obviously, you can see from what they're going to do that they're going to bring back a lot of benefit to the district and to the students. And from a financial standpoint, you know, I say in that backup, it's not costing the district any more money. So I've talked to Mr. Pink to the matter and again, that's, you know, that's probably, you know, the one concern we have, you know, is just, you know, is any school system operating or not.
I think Alan brings up a good point. I support the sabbaticals and they both sound like, you know, great learning experiences. But I'd like to hear maybe a little bit more about how that's going to affect Morse and, you know, are we going to be able to find the people to fill those positions? Maybe if we could get a little bit more information about that, would you consider tabling your motion until the next board meeting? And so that we can get that information?
It's all about showing timelines. But I think it's very important that we have somebody in place that's going to, you know, as I always used to tell people when I was interviewing for substitutes, we're not looking for babysitters, we're looking for teachers.
Right.
It's very important.
I think I'd like to have that information before we vote. So, do you mind tabling that motion?
Well, before, just before you get rid of the issue. And, I mean, we've granted, the district has granted sabbaticals in PANS, yes, and has the language, that language that our department has included as part of the motion.
It wasn't the last time. I think there's been one since I've been here in my first year. And it wasn't, didn't have that language specifically, but at the time, the board did table it. You know, took some time to think about it, the information, and then came back and voted.
I mean, because I just want to make sure we don't, we're not sending out a message to these two individuals and to the teaching, our teaching staff generally, that we're not supportive of the, you know, learning opportunities that might present themselves or, you know, allowing our faculty to take advantage of learning opportunities that might present themselves, that might be presented. I think generally, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, I think sabbaticals are a good thing at a certain point in an individual's career. You know, I really can get some additional information on how we're going to backfill these two positions. Both the nature of sabbaticals, they should go ahead and approve. Although, fine to go ahead and approve, but I don't have to send a message out there that would have hesitated to manage sabbaticals in general.
I support sabbaticals 100%, but I also think we need to have a character there that's going to protect the schools and the education itself.
Yeah, I think historically.
So, you know, I think it's, we come up upon us to reassure that that thing's close.
Historically, we have passed sabbaticals. And I think it's something that we've encouraged and I think it's encouraged, you know, within the district. But I think, again, I don't want to, in general, I think the board supports these, but I think it would behoove us to do a little bit more research and understand the implications of this before we go ahead and pass it so that, you know, we have that information. And I always get confused with this and if someone wants to help me out, if you can, for Robert's rules of order, there is a motion. From Robert's Rules of Order, there is a motion on the table. I don't know if you can just withdraw that motion, or if we have to vote on that motion?
Do we have to vote on it? Do we have to vote to table?
Okay, so there is an initial motion, there is an initial motion on the floor right now to approve. So...
Move to table.
So I think we're just voting on the motion to approve, so what we would do, if we want to table it, we would vote down the approval, and then we would make the motion to approve, table it until the next meeting.
I don't know, I think the motion to table, it's a privilege.
I think it's a privilege.
Oh, definitely.
Okay.
I'll roll with that.
So then, the motion on the table, I mean, the motion we have is to table the current motion to approve the sabbatical. All those in favor of tabling that current motion, raise your hand. Any opposed, none opposed, so that passes. So, the motion to approve is tabled until the next board meeting. And in the meantime, we'd like to just see a little bit more supporting information about what the impact is going to be at Morse High School, and will we have satisfactory substitution, do you have a plan? All right. Thank you. Item of Latinical, Public Comment.
I don't know if I'm breaking protocol, Tim, but is it all right to publicly acknowledge that student representative Kyle Heitler has been accepted to Yale University today? Is that allowed?
That's great. Congratulations, Tom.
Thank you.
We did it prior to the meeting, but we would like to publicly acknowledge.
We thought he just found my t-shirt.
Kyle has been, has been accepted to Yale University. Congratulations, Kyle.
Thank you, Chair.
So there is no other public comment at this time. We will end the public comment session, a session, and we'll move on to item 12.0. Set next meeting date and location.
I have one question before that, if I could.
Go ahead, Alan.
Last time that we were talking about, I had asked that we have some work related to last month, and I wrote something and turned it in. I was wondering what the status of that is.
Alan, I think there was Policy AC-A-B, and that policy's on the policy agenda for Thursday morning, at 7:15.
So it's in the process?
Yep, I've been to type it up, and it'll be for that committee, David will see it, and, you know, and the other policy committee members on Thursday, Thursday morning.
I just wanted to go along the ways I go.
Sure, sir. Okay, next meeting date and location is set for Monday, January 27th. Yeah, 2014. At Fisher-Richell, please add that to your calendars. Let's do that now. And that one is at Fisher-Richell. Okay, if I won't have the opportunity, we'd like to wish you all a safe and happy New Year, happy holidays. Thank you again to Robin for your time on the board. And as I said, and I'll say it publicly, it's been a pleasure. We've really enjoyed having your opinions and your insight, and it's been great to work with you on a lot of really tough issues. On a lighter note, as I mentioned in the retreat, I am working part-time as a Santa's helper, and I'm hoping that this comes in. And if not, we'll see what happens. So again...
What it is, what I get is, oh, it was a good posture posture.
All right.
We'll see you later.
That has yet to be disclosed. I'm dealing with the naughty ones. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Bill, seconded by Alan. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of adjourn, please raise your hand. Passes, done.